Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, September 18, 2018. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak under public participation on any of the three considerations that are on your agenda tonight, you're more than welcome to do that. Simply fill out a speaker request form. I already have a couple. Give them to our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, and she will get those to me, and I'll try to get you on at the appropriate time. Having said that, I'm going to ask our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, to call the roll, please.
Jacobson.
Present.
Finnoukan.
Here.
Markhort.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Prior to getting into our considerations tonight, and I will once again remind folks who may not be familiar, we will not make any firm decisions this evening. This is basically for information, to provide not only our city council with information on our -- a number of our budgeting items for 2018 and 2019, but also to give us a roadmap, if you will, the beginning of a number of other special meetings that we may be having here over the next several weeks. So with that, I'm going to go to item number B on your agenda, and that is public participation. We have two folks in the audience who have indicated they'd like to address a couple of the topics. One is Steve Ramsdale. So Steve, if you'd come up to the podium, please, and I see you'd like to speak on TIF and accountability.
A little bit, yes. My name's Steve Ramsdale. I've been a lifelong member of this community, and it just seems like with our budget deficit the way it is, that there's got to be a better way to use our money. And I'm not so concerned about taking care of the community if it's going to do some good, but this TIF money seems to be going to projects that don't have any payback. I don't think we should even consider the third TIF until we figure out at least the accounting on the first two. And I mean, just for instance, like Wynn Aviation requested $235,000 because they said after the renovations, they would make an extra $110,000. So that's like a three-year return on that. The Cornerstone, with the money we gave for them, they -- from what I've read in the paper, they said that between $1 and $2 million is what they're expecting for added value to the community. And I did a little math, maybe I'm bad at math, but that turned out to be about $20,000 to $1 million. That's $20,000 for each apartment in Cornerstone to raise $1 million in DeKalb for the year. Another thing's like the money we spent for the path under the Viaduct over by the lagoon. If you're on a path, first of all, you're an outdoors person. You don't need a roof. That was $1,500,000. That would have covered almost our whole deficit. The light debacle that we had a few years ago where we replaced all the streetlights, the one at 38 and Pine in front of the Catholic Church, that's actually an illegal light. You can't even see that light when you're going east on that street. I mean, none of those needed to be replaced. We were just using the money that we had. The more things we build, the more we're going to have to do upkeep. That's really about all I had to say. I love my little community, and I mean, we can't raise taxes because Illinois right now, we are the second highest taxed state in the nation. There's people leaving in droves, and we need to keep our community whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Ed Baye, who would like to speak on the proposed restaurant. Excuse me. Our next speaker is Ed Baye, who'd like to speak on the proposed restaurant and entertainment tax.
It's actually two topics. I'm Ed Baye, the family of the Bayes, who own Rositas, Eduardo's, and some other stuff in business. We've been in business for over 50 years. In fact, Rositas is going to be celebrating close to 50 years pretty soon, which is remarkable that we're in DeKalb and succeeding. What I want to talk about is two things. One, we understand that all of our governments are under pressure, and so is small business too in DeKalb. We've, since 2007, we've seen declines in our revenue, mostly due to NIU being lower now. There is a direct correlation, as many of you know, how NIU does, DeKalb does, I mean, they're the largest employer. So we understand the pressures you face and so forth. So all we ask is you apply wisdom and insight in how to solve these issues that doesn't just affect the city of DeKalb, it affects every small businesses here, so forth like that. The second issue is something more personal. I don't know if you remember, about 20 years ago, I was appointed by Chief Don Berkey to be the chairman for the DeKalb Task Force on Gangs and Drugs. I worked with Mayor Judy King then. We had Greg, many of you know Greg Sparrow and all that. So I was part of that group at that point in time. And my involvement was to work with community in issues of crime, drug, and so forth. And why I brought this up here is looking back now, and I just read this this afternoon, any reduction in law enforcement, you will endanger the security of these people. Many of you know that just at Rositas, we had our first armed robbery by someone coming in and trying to rob cash. And lucky for us, our law enforcement were able to buy DNA to find out who that was. We never had that before. Many of you know that in front of our house, there was actually a gun battle between two gangs for drug trafficking. This has just happened last year. And many of you know that within a couple of blocks of my mom's house, there's a drug house. The law enforcement know and they're watching. So we have an issue of protecting the community. And as I saw this afternoon, and granted, I may be wrong, any reduction in law enforcement, in my personal belief, you are endangering the security of the people of this town. We do have a drug issue here, and it's not going away. So what I'm saying, maybe because I know a lot of the past police chiefs, Bill Fithin, Don Berkey, I was involved with several of the selections of us over the last 20, 30 years. So I do have a law enforcement bench, I'll be honest with you. But our law enforcement is aware they need to be supported, and we cannot back down from criminal activity. That's my statement to you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, assuming we have no other buddy from the audience who would like to speak, I will move into our considerations. I ask our finance director slash interim city manager, Molly Talkington, to come to the podium. And Molly, I'm going to let you either second what I had initially indicated, and that is that this is a conversation, and while we can have as much or as little discussion on any of the specific items that we have tonight, nothing is going to be determined tonight. But I think what you've said before us in the background material that was available on the website, for anybody who would like to take a look at it, if you haven't done so already, gives us a pretty good picture of not only where we are in terms of the city of DeKalb and our financial picture, but it certainly provides some options on what we may want to consider. So I'll toss it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first thing tonight is an overview on the 2018 property tax levy. This becomes important for this evening's discussion because it does relate to the next topic when we're talking about your budget balancing measures. So this is coming to you earlier than it typically would in the past. And again, like the mayor said, it's more to seek guidance in your kind of thoughts and feelings on everything, and then we can work from there. If there's a good indication that the council supports something or doesn't support something, we can make adjustments or bring back more information, because you do have another budget workshop next month, and then you have the joint one with the Finance Advisory Committee in November. So we have a little time to work through everything here. So the first topic tonight is the property tax levy overview. So I met with the Finance Advisory Committee last week on this topic, and did make a few changes, and I'll incorporate some of their comments as I go through it. But the current city policy for your property tax levy and how you have it is, the very first thing is you want to fund, and it's Policy 1A is the first one, because there's -- as we have more funding, you can go through more priorities, but the very first priority that's listed in your financial policy is to fund police, fire, and the Illinois IMRF pension funds 100% through your property tax levy. So last year, we didn't do that. So IMRF is fully funded by other revenue sources in the current budget, and about $450,000 of police and fire pension was also shifted to other taxes, which is mainly your sales taxes, it's our largest tax in the city for revenue collection. So I'm going to go through each levy portion of the property tax levy and explain what the current requirements are for funding it, and then give you two options on how we can go down the path of funding that. One will be two policy, and one will be similar to what you did this year, where you tried to target the growth in the EAV, the equalized assessed valuation. So the first thing, we had the actuaries here, the last budget workshop, and they went over the assumptions for the police and fire pension fund. So I'm not going to go into detail of those, but there were changes made, so your contribution has increased from last year. So the total employee required funding is $6.6 million for police and fire combined. Right now, your current property tax levy is only $6.4 million, so that in itself is above where we're at in the current levy. The second thing, if you were going to fund IMRF and Social Security, Social Security is 1B of your policy, that would be about another $1.4 million. IMRF is $771,000 of that, and Social Security is $624,000. The next levy you have is the debt. So what happens with debt is, I will give you a larger number, so you'll have on your adopted levy $5.5 million for debt service. But then we abate all the city debt, and so what remains is about $489,000 specifically related to debt for the library. So the $490,000 is what ends up on your extended property tax bill, not the full $5.5 million, because we abate that, and we use other sources to pay it. So if it's a TIF-related debt, we use TIF funding to pay for that. If it's water-related, we use water. So we have other sources to pay for the city's debt. And the one thing I did differently on the debt this year is, in talking to the county last year, they add 1% to the debt service levy. So I just spelled it out in the memo, where last year you wouldn't have seen that 1%. And they do that because while property tax is highly collected to almost 100%, there's always a portion that is not collected. So they add 1%, so you can always make your debt payment. So you will get in the full amount enough for us to turn around and make that debt payment. The next is, if you wanted to support, you know, additional services for the general fund. We haven't used that allocation, the corporate levy, for general fund, other services, in a while. There was a few, two years ago, where there was funding in there, but that funding actually went to police and fire levies. So we haven't used it to support the general fund support. So all the other revenues in the general fund support that. And then the library dollars are also included in the levy. So as you know, the public library is going to bring us their levy rate. The library director has indicated she wants to target the EAV growth, and so they'll come with their levy request, but they'll have an abatement of the taxes from the prior, you know, the rebate we've been talking about, which is about $992,000. So then that'll bring down that levy portion. But it's going to be two ordinances, you'll see. You'll see the levy request, and then you'll see the ordinance to abate it. And that levy request, if we're using, the county has given me an initial indication of the assessed growth at 4%. So if you used 4%, the library levy request would be $2.1 million. The special service areas, these are not on the city as a whole, they're in those special service areas. So like Greek Row has a specific area for the, like, operations to pay for the electricity for streetlights. But it's only on those properties that were designated in that SSA. Currently, the city has four SSAs. So you have your Heritage Ridge SSA, Knolls SSA, Greek Row, and Heartland Fields SSAs. So if you live in that SSA area, you will be assessed that levy. If you don't live in that area, you don't get the special service levy. So the growth for the equalized assessed value at 4% is about a $21 million increase to our EAV. So it's about $551 million for the full city value, for assessed value. The final growth number of EAV won't come from the county until late October, but we use the estimate early on, because if I waited till October, it's really a fast turnaround for us to get in front of you and try to get your sense of where you want to go with the levy. So on page four of the memo, I was separating this out a little bit more than we did last year. Last year, everything was included, and we talked about it all as one kind of package. So I pulled it out to try to make it a little bit easier to follow. So what I was calling the base levy is your corporate levy, police pension, fire pension, IMRF, and debt service. And that, again, is taxed on everyone in the city. So if you were going to levy to your policy of that 1A, that would be a levy of $7.8 million, because you remember the tax levy is a dollar amount we give to the county, which results into a rate. The current year's levy is $6.5 million. So that would be a $1.3 million increase on the levy, or 21% over the current levy you have now. But that would fully fund police, fire, IMRF, and then the library debt service through property tax levy. And that would then result in an increase to the homeowner. So if you had $150,000 home, the value on your home didn't change from last year, it would be a $99 increase on your bill. However, the Finance Advisory Committee, we have a water fund, which we treat as an enterprise fund. So an enterprise fund is like a business. Every revenue coming in should cover all the expenses going out. And typically, in a business, you own property, you pay the city taxes. Well, the water fund is part of the city, so they don't pay us taxes, right? Because we aren't taxed. So we do what we call a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, and it's based on the value of the assets in the water fund, as if that enterprise still has an obligation to provide payment to the general fund. It's about $321,000 a year that we get in that pilot from the water fund. So if you reduce that base levy to include the pilot as part of what you are considering property tax, that would bring the increase down to just over $1 million from last year's levy, or 16% increase. And then the $150,000 home, the increase would be $70. So it does reduce it a little if you count that pilot as part of your property tax levy picture. Now, last year, council chose to target the rate and capture the growth in the EAV and not follow policy. We deviated from policy last year. If you're going to go down that path again to target that rate, I put together a scenario, because remember, right now, the 4% is an estimated early number from the county. And what happens with a tax levy is when you adopt it, that is the highest amount you can go. We can reduce it down, but we can never go back above that dollar amount. So to capture the growth, it's a guess, right? We're taking an educated guess, we work with the county and other inputs, to determine what we think that assessed value will grow. So what I put on here is, if the county has told us 4% growth right now, and I was calling that your most likely amount, it wouldn't increase the tax rate then to the homeowner, but it would allow the city to increase the revenue they get. So what I would do is, I would ask you to let me use the most likely amount, so that would be a $6.7 -- $6 million levy, to put into our budget, to put into our financial forecasting. So we're using that lower number. But I would ask you to adopt a levy at a 6% estimated growth. So when you would adopt the levy, you'll see a $6.9 million levy. At 4%, this is an increase of $260,000 to the general fund over last year, and at optimistic, it would be a $390,000 increase to the general fund. But by adopting, so I had asked you to adopt at the 6%, the higher amount, and adopt a fill-in-the-blank abatement ordinance. Because in April, when the county comes back and says, here's what the final figures are for growth, we have about a week to turn around, that yep, that's what we want, it produces the target rate. So in this scenario, if 6% is our cap, and we budget everything at 4%, and it happens the EAV comes in at 5%, right? In April, I can reduce down the levies to that 5% levy, or growth. It'll still be a 0% increase to the homeowners, because it's the same rate, but it'll give the city a little bit more revenue, because now we were able to capture the full growth that happened in that EAV. It's a little complicated, because the levy is a dollar amount, so you have to give them a dollar amount, and then it backs in to get the rate in April. And so to get that rate, to keep the target rate, there's a little bit of leeway. So if you levy at the higher amount, we can come down. But if you levied at 4%, and it came in at 5%, we lose that growth of 1%. We don't get to keep it, and our rate goes down that year. So it's giving you flexibility to reduce down, to capture all of the growth that happens in the year, instead of capping yourself too low if the estimate's lower than what it turns out in the following year. I know it sounds a little complicated, but I spelled it out through the memo, so you can look at page six and seven, and it goes into more detail on how that works. But it's a way for us to try to capture all the growth and really get that target rate that you want to keep. So if you want to keep the same rate number, we do that in April, we get back to that same rate. That is what, then I talked with the library director, and she wanted to capture growth. So she would do that same model of the levy the higher amount, they will have an abatement for the rebate, and then an abatement to reduce for the growth. So they would have three steps, because they have the added rebate abatement that they're going to present to you. So for the library, the most likely is a $2.1 million levy, but the optimistic, that 6% is a $2.2 million levy. And the rebate on the homeowner of $150,000 value home is approximately $90. So it would go down, it would reduce the amount that the homeowner's paying in that year for that rebate. And then we add on your special service area. So again, if you don't live in one of the special service areas, you won't be paying property tax for the special service areas. So for Heritage Ridge, we'd extend $1,000, that's the same as this year. It would actually decrease the rate slightly, but there'd be no real dollar impact on the homeowner. Knolls is a $5,500 levy, that would be about a dollar reduction to the homeowner. Greek Row, Greek Row is the one where we set a max rate. So the rate on Greek Row is a .25 rate. So again, I'm trying to capture that full amount of that rate, because we are not bringing enough income in for that service area for what we're paying. So you can see the expenditures are estimated at $18,000, and hitting that .25 rate, it's $16,400, so we've been subsidizing the difference through the general fund. So each year, we're going to try to target a little bit more. However, targeting that rate, again, it's the zero increase to the homeowner. And then Heartland Fields is $2,500, and that one actually goes down $3. So you have different options on how we can put together your estimated property tax levy, which we need to do in early November. It'll come to you, you have to adopt an estimated levy, and then we will do all the truth and taxation notices if it's above 5%. So if we do the optimistic levy, we would be above 5%. So we do that, you know, black box notice in the newspaper and all the requirements for that. And then in December, I come back to adopt the final tax levy for the council. Are there any questions on the tax levy?
Molly, I have one, and then I'd like to open it up to the council. And I hope you can understand this question. Given the fact, we realize that the library scenario is somewhat unique to DeKalb, Illinois, this year, okay? But in a general overview scope, as it relates to property tax levies, is what we're doing pretty much the norm for most municipalities that are of comparable, comparable communities? Do you see what I mean? Is there anything other than the library tax levy situation that smacks of being different in any extraordinary way?
No, I think you're probably 50/50 on what communities do it. I've been in communities where they levy to the dollar amount they need, and then whatever rate comes out is what the result is. I've also been in communities, like Champaign, is where I took that most likely optimistic scenario from. That's what we did when I was there, and it really helped. So that last year I was there, my most likely levy, when I put it together for Champaign, was 5%. My optimistic was 8%. And the big difference actually was just the amount of Board of Review appeals we had. And at the end, in April, the EAV came out an 8% increase. So they were able to capture all the way to the 8%, because we had done the optimistic levy amount. And again, it results in that same tax rate. So the homeowner shouldn't have an increase if the value of their home hadn't changed. So there's, I think it's split, just depending on how, you know, the city is a run, and what their desire as a council is. Do you want to hit the certain dollar amount, or are you trying to target a rate? And so in here, it gives you the two scenarios. One, your policy that hits a dollar amount, and then the rate scenario.
Yeah, obviously, the policies that this council set has a tremendous impact on what it is that we need to do going forward or want to do. Okay, that was my question. Alderman, Fagan.
Molly, just taking a look at this. So what you're talking about is from the optimistic view on the 2017 base levy. The increase would only increase, for the optimistic going from 4 to 6, it's about $130,000.
Right, so on page six shows you the difference.
Right.
Middle box.
Right. Okay, so we're only talking about $130,000 difference?
Yeah, it'd be $130,000 increase to the revenue, to the general fund. But it should still remain a zero increase to the tax bill, because you're capturing the rate.
I'm just looking at the dollar.
Yeah.
That's all I want, because I want to bring that back later.
Okay.
Alderman, Noriko.
Molly, how will the library tax rebate show up on the homeowner's tax bill? How will they be able to trace that back to?
They won't. So each levy has one line. And so when the county gets the three ordinance from the library, right, they'll have their optimistic levy, their $992,000 rebate levy, or abatement, and then they would have an abatement for the growth. All three of those get added together, and that's what becomes the levy line. So you will not see, like, here it's estimated, that would be about $90 to that home, you wouldn't see it, because it would be, it would just reduce the amount of the library. So if the library levy was $200, then it would reduce it 90, unless they go down another 10. All they'll see is a $100 levy. So, you know, the payment portion. It won't be individualized on the personal homeowner's bill.
Okay, thank you.
Good overview. Are there any additional questions or comments regarding the 2018 property tax levy? If not, let's move along to our second consideration. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Mike?
I'm sorry. I'm slow thinking. So using the optimistic at the 6%, or even at the 4%, and if you figure in the payment in lieu of taxes part into that as well, right?
You could, that would reduce your rate if you added the pilot into that scenario.
Well, I was looking at page 7, where you get the income minus expenses, and you look at the difference. Where the most likely amount is a little over a million.
Right.
So if you take that 320, that would lower that down.
Correct, but right now, the pilot is already included in the mix of your general fund revenues. So if you were going to use it to calculate in the most likely optimistic scenario, in the end, you would be reducing your rate because we're going to reduce it by the 321,000. But it's essentially causing you a $321,000 hole elsewhere.
Right.
Yeah. But in the, if you're going to go to policy, you haven't been at that policy level in a while. So any increase, even less the 321,000, would bring you more income into the general fund, and it would help offset what you were using other revenues to pay for the pensions for. Because right now, you have about $450,000 for police and fire that shifted to those other revenues. Well, you could count the 321 against that 450, right? So if you did it to policy, it was going to go up about $1 million when you use the pilot. That's freeing up about $1 million of other sources for you to then fund other things in the general fund or fill your gap that we're going to talk about in a minute. But it doesn't, in the rate scenario, when you target the rate, counting the 321 would actually cause you a problem funding-wise. So I wouldn't use the pilot when you're, if you're going to go down the rate path, leave the pilot and the other general fund sources. Because it's going to
It's going to have to be there. It's going to have to be there to cover the
Like I R F.
Part, and then the portion of the pensions, police and fire, that we're not covering in the other part anyways.
Right, so if you want to shift back to policy, then it becomes important whether or not you want to include that pilot.
So the pilot in the rate scenario should just not even be in that consideration.
Right, because the
Other than into the pilot, other than into the budget part where we have to cover what we're not covering.
Right, so it's essentially, it's covering 321,000 of your I R F when you do the rate scenario.
Got it.
Okay.
That's
And answer your question, Mike, or?
It does.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that all the different options are kind of covered and making sense.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, now let's move on to our second consideration, proposed fiscal year 2019 general fund budget planning measures.
So the budget balancing. In June, we brought the five-year financial plan to City Council. So we brought the five-year financial plan. It's back actually on your agenda. So if you have any questions, we can go over that too, because it does relate to this item as well. So you do have that as an agenda topic for tonight. But I don't intend on going through the five-year financial plan at any point in time unless you have a question on it, okay? So for the budget balancing measures, we put together a financial, five-year forecast within that five-year plan. And what the results of that were was kind of three major changes that happened. You have the pension funding shift where we're not doing the policy, we're doing to the rate. So that shifted some over to other general fund sources. We have a decline in the building permit revenue. And that was really because the projects that were known and underway at the time we put the budget together, like the STEAM project, are no longer projects that are planned and underway now. So we adjusted for now the new known projects that we're going to do within these years with council direction that we've had so far. So like, the STEAM project goes out, but the STEAM project was one of many building permits because that one was supposed to trigger other developments, and we had planned for all of that within that revenue. So that reduced that revenue about $450,000. And then we went through a list, I did it with the community development director, Joellen Charlton, and we looked at the five years of what's kind of on the horizon for building permits. And it does increase, right? Now with the projects we have now, and what we think will happen in the next year, is you'll have some increase. It just wasn't going to be off of that kind of base of the $450,000 we reduced. So over the five years, that was reduced a little bit. And then the third one was really, what are we doing with the Peace Road Agreement with the county? So in the current budget, we did not have the expenditure for that agreement. We've been working with the county in negotiations and talking through that. That should come back to council here shortly, but we're still working through it. But because we didn't go through the action you had tabled, that we put the sales tax on there to reduce the half a percent, and then the sales tax to come back the half a percent, and that would have ended that Peace Road Agreement. Since we tabled taking any action on that sales tax change, we now have to pay the county the portion of the agreement, right? We're still in the agreement, we still owe them that portion. So I've added back the $245,000 in that expenditure. And of course, with the fund balance requirements, about $300,000 change. I do have that going out through the whole five years as well. So that's a big change when you look at that five-year forecast. So what it's doing is, we had, I had come back to you, we went over all your financial policies at the Finance Advisory Committee, and had made some recommendations, brought it to council, you guys have seen them. So they're still in that recommended status, so you haven't approved them. They'll be part of that budget package if you want them or not. So I did the policy target, really, to the two fund balance scenarios. Because one, your current policy is 25% of expenditures. And then the recommended one through Finance Advisory Committee is the 30% less property tax revenue. So that's why there's two lines, the blue and the green. But in either scenario, your expenditures are outpacing your revenue. So that's really where that red line goes, it's showing you the trend. But remember, it builds upon itself, so whatever fix we make now, we'll correct it going forward. So it's showing you that trend. Our expenditures continue to outgrow or outpace our revenues. And that's what we brought to you in June. So basically, I went through that. It's about a $1.6 million deficit, and that's what we've been calling our budget gap. And I brought it back to council, and you gave direction that we can work to fix that gap. So come January 1, with the 2019 budget, we'll bring your budget back in line with those two policies. So I've worked with the departments, worked with council, you know, took input from just about anyone I could get it from. But I have to say, you know, employees had some creative ideas. The unions participated, they gave suggestions. Department heads really tried to think of different ways we can provide services and tried to minimize the impact to services. But in any scenario, when we're going through a large portion of the, so the general fund being $38 million, 1.6 million is a big portion of that budget. So there are service impacts when we start to look at balancing this budget. If you're going down expenditure reductions, you can always choose to look at revenue increases as well, or some combination of those both. Because if the revenues start to grow at the pace of the expenditures, that solves your gap. If the expenditures come down, so they start to grow at the pace of your revenues, that solves your gap. So you have different ways you can address this budget gap. So when we met with all the departments, I went through all the different scenarios and really talked to every department head, walked through, what does this mean from a service? And how can we really implement it? Now, because we're here so early, it gives us time to work through how it would be implemented in more detail. So a lot of these are proposals that if you give direction, like, we want to go down that path, I probably will go back to staff, work with that department, and figure out the plan of how we need to enact that reduction or revenue. And so it comes in line for December 31st. So your January 1 budget would be balanced. But it's really enabling us time to work through what those service reductions would be and how they'd be implemented. So if you have questions on specifics, I might not have answers yet because we haven't gone down to that detail level at this moment. So the first thing I actually did on the forecast was I made adjustments to new information. And I gave this to you in June, and the Illinois Municipal League released their July figures for their state shared revenue. So that allowed me to adjust local use tax, income tax, personal property real-placement tax, and a few other miscellaneous adjustments. But the local use tax was really changed because the federal decision on the Wayfair case. And so Wayfair is an online realtor, and how does that work to be part of your sales tax collection? So in the state of Illinois, it's a use tax. And so it is divvied out per capita, it is not on where the sales occurred. So they're not tracking that I purchased something in my DeKalb home, so I'm going to pay state tax plus home rule tax. It's, I pay state tax, the state takes all the money in from those online realtors, and then divvies it out per capita. So we're seeing an increase in the local use tax. But that's not really the part of sales tax where you get the lion's share of your revenue. So it is a good adjustment there. But in this case, we're looking at how it goes forward, and then income tax adjustments were better. I've lowered the use taxes, I thought it was, I thought Wayfair would be higher. It came in a little bit under from what I estimated. But then the state income tax, well, the projections are higher than what I had estimated. And that personal property replacement tax, I left it alone, knowing that they would add another kind of thing to the pie of what gets divvied out in that pool. So that worked out, we had minor change in that, $13,000 increase for this year, so that's good. And then we went through the actuary presentations. So I updated the forecast to the final numbers in those actuary reports. I was using estimates before. So it reduces your revenue, and it reduces the expenditure. So you'll see that in two places in this report. So on page 7 is where I start going down. All of the things put together is a big package. Every department has some impact when we look at this. And there are a few revenue increases to solve that $1.6 million gap. So here's kind of the organizational chart that we currently have. The first things I looked at, well, let's start with the revenues. There are three revenue changes that are being kind of recommended to council to consider. One is to increase our ambulance fees. Right now, we have more of a different rates for a basic life service transfer versus advanced. But you know, it's the same trucks with the same employees delivering that service. So to make that a fixed rate of $1,800, and this is actually the biggest change when it looks, when we look at revenues, that we met with our billing company, and we went through and looked at all the different communities, and about $1,800 is the standard charge. Most of the time, that payment is made through your insurance. And so the income for this is about an additional $300,000. That's about 90, 311. But it's about 90% of what we calculated with the ambulance billing company, because there can be changes. And we did it based on our past history and transports for prior years. But there could be changes, we could have less or more. I mean, it really, it just, it adjusts with how that service is being used. The next thing we looked at was restructuring false alarm fees for fire. Right now, there isn't a fee until your fourth false alarm fee. So this would be more of a graduated, it'd start at the second false alarm and it'd increase with each false alarm that you have. So we have about $25,000 increase in that because we're starting a little bit earlier on when we start charging fees for false alarms. And then intercept ambulance fee, this is working with our surrounding communities. We still would respond to mutual aid with no charge. But this is when a company provides, so if you're in Cortland, and you have Cortland Service, they come, they call our ambulance because they want an advanced service, right? So they'll meet at the border, maybe not the border, but you meet at the border, they'll switch the patient from Cortland response to our response, and we deliver the patient to the hospital. Cortland's the one that's billing the insurance agencies. So we would work out an agreement with them that anytime we come and we take the patient from them to bring to the hospital, they would charge us $800, and they can turn around and add it to their package that they would then charge the billing company. So it's a way for us to continue to fund our services we're providing to people at a higher level than the areas surrounding. And that's about a $9,000 increase. Those are the only three revenue increases that I have listed kind of in the recommended balancing package. You do have alternatives at the back of this packet where I've walked through your different revenue options that tell you, here's sales tax, here's what it's on, here's what it can increase at a certain amount, here's the positive, and then here's the negative. So each revenue in the back of this package kind of goes through that. So if you say, you know, we don't really want to start charging false alarm fees at that amount, then what other thing can we do? Do we look to a revenue, or do we find another budget cut to the expenditures? So the next thing is really all, the lion's share of balancing this budget is through expenditure reductions. And every portion of the service reduc, or the budget balancing measures is a service reduction. So it will bring the service that we would provide in any scenario here to a lower level than we currently provide. The real question for council is, is that acceptable level? Or do you want to keep it at the higher level, or even increase it? But if you want to keep it or increase it, what do you want to reduce somewhere else? Or what revenue do you want to look at to raise? So there's always going to be some trade of where you want to find it. Or if you don't want to do those, how far are you willing to use fund balance to supplement providing services at that level? But then that means we're not going to meet our fund balance policy under the 25% or 30% scenario. So the real big change is, like I said, there's the police and fire adjustment. Starts on page 8, that is in line with the revenue adjustment I made there. Is, so if we start with the city manager's office. Currently, you can see on the org chart, the city manager's office is separate from HR and IT. And those three are separate departments. What this would really do is, and we've kind of made this change to begin with, is the HR director recently found another job. So that HR director position would be one recommended to eliminate and report through to the assistant city manager. Now, I think you have some savings in the assistant city manager because we'd hire at midpoint or lower. And so you have some savings that you can capture there as well. So you would save from the HR department director position plus hiring at a lower level for the assistant city manager. The other part of it, we eliminated the administrative assistant position in HR. And that employee was actually moved to the vacant community development assistant. So you have savings in that position of like $26,000. However, as you guys know, and we've talked about for quite a while here, with police and fire, recruiting and getting people onboard and hired and starting in the city has been an ongoing problem because it takes so long from start to finish to have your officer, really your officers and then your firefighters on the street ready to go and provide those services. So a portion of that is you need the HR support. So right now, after you don't have the director anymore and the assistant anymore, you have one assistant HR director and a half-time HR generalist. Shifting that HR department to two HR generalists, one because they can cross-train each other and be backups for each other, and two, moving the half-time HR generalist to full-time. So the police and fire recruiting that is being done by the assistant director would go to the current HR generalist that's been doing recruiting for everything else. So recruiting be packaged with one person, they'd be responsible for it, and we can continue by adding hours to that position to try to cut down that time from when we hire an officer, or actually, when we go to recruit an officer to when they start and can be ready to be on the field on their own. The other part of this is you have the information technologies department is separate as well. So the second part of this would be to eliminate the IT director position and bring IT back underneath city manager's office. It's currently failed, and the current director was hired to kind of bring some higher-level expertise to our department and get us moving forward a little bit. But we haven't been able to give the funding support to that department that's needed to do some of those technology measures. And we actually reduced the IT department by one IT tech last year. So even the manpower support in that department is lower than what was anticipated when we brought on the director position. So to continue to provide services in IT, we would continue at the level we're at now. We just weren't able to capture those higher-level goals that you guys had wanted for the IT director. the IT director. And then the next thing in city manager's office, we currently have two management interns. Both of them that we have right now, it's on the school term, so they're done in May. This would eliminate one of the intern positions but keep one on, so we would hire another one. But that one would actually take almost everything in here. We target to take effect for January one. The interns I'd target for June because they would separate in May. So we keep the two interns just through that portion and then only hire one going forward. Other changes in those departments aren't position-related. There's a tuition reimbursement program for city employees. We'd eliminate that, twenty-five thousand dollars. Employees were told last year, when we made a reduction to this already, that anyone who was with one year or one and a half years left, they were being funded, and we basically had told everyone else, we think this would be eliminated in the following year. So I think employees are kind of prepared for this when it comes. However, staff is going to try to work with NIU or KISH to see if there's a partnering opportunity that maybe we can provide a reduced tuition because they've partnered with us or something that could still encourage employees to go get advanced degrees, but just not through us funding it in the tuition reimbursement style. And then IT tech department, there's about forty thousand dollars of various software systems that either we've, we're reducing licenses or they're duplicative in nature. And we wanted to try to start like a technology replacement program. It doesn't exist yet, so that's an eleven thousand dollar reduction because we won't be able to make that work going forward right now. The next department is the finance department. So currently, finance has two vacant account technician, three positions. We're going through a new financial software process, which I think will make us a lot more efficient. Currently, the accounts payable is one. That was the main focus of the one account technician position, and accounts receivable was the main focus of the other. I think we can combine those two because with our current system, we're very paper-heavy. It really takes a full week to try to get AP done. The new system, I would like it to be, you know, more like a two-day process because we'll be able to scan and, and sign off electronically, and you're not doing this paper-heavy process. And that's really the same thing with accounts receivable. So I think we can consolidate those two positions and go down one in finance. Now, finance is funded by multiple funds because we provide services to airport and water, and we do a lot more than just general funds. The savings is only thirty-one thousand because that's the general fund portion of that position. The fire department is next. The deputy chief of operations position, you have two deputy chiefs, one of operations and one in training. We keep the training position. The chief of operations position would essentially be merged into the duties of the fire chief, and this would be eliminated through attrition, again, targeting that January one date. The other one is one firefighter position, again, through attrition. Right now, you have three shifts. It would take one shift down one firefighter, but we have two firefighters on a swing shift, so they'd be used more often than that one shift that's down a person than they are now. So we would work through trying to maintain our service levels through doing that. Then next, we take, there's a part-time office associate in the fire department who actually really does accounts receivable work. She's helping doing some of the ambulance billing and that kind of information. I want to eliminate this position, but actually use that person in the finance department because our opening is in accounts receivable, accounts payable, and make it all one. So we're still going to provide that service to fire, but we're going to provide it through the finance department and streamline accounts receivable into one area instead of having it in two different spots. And then to offset that reduction with a firefighter, it would be what I'm calling kind of an over-hire funding. We'd actually add back some funding for six months, and it could shorten, it's an attempt to shorten how fast we can get someone into the department. And so you would have an over-hire, right? Because if you have someone who's given their notice, they're still in position control. Your over-hire is your one above, and we'd limit that to that six-month period. But it will bring someone into the department sooner, so we're ready faster for them to deliver services at that level that needs before that person actually, well, maybe not before, but they're in the department before the person who's leaving goes. So we have that chance to shorten that window of hiring. And that's similar to what is included in the police department. So right now, you have three positions in police that are currently filled, but they're, those three positions, the people in those positions aren't working on the street or in their roles because they're using some of their collectively bargained benefits to stay in the position through January, but they're not out on the street doing the work we need. So we have two, and here essentially be to eliminate two police officer positions in January when those three people retire and they vacate that position. But then I've also asked for two six-month appointments for the over-hire, so we can actually start to fill those positions sooner, right? We know they separated essentially for us for service-wise in August. And if we can use over-hire, we can bring someone in in August instead of starting the process in January. So it's helping to shorten that window and try to keep the police department at their authorized level more often than they are. Because right now, the authorized sworn is sixty-five. We've been at sixty-five for short periods of time over the last few years, but we've really been operating a sworn strength of sixty-three or lower because we cannot get people into those positions fast enough. So my hope is by going to sixty-three in your sworn, but adding that over-hire, you're getting to sixty-three more often, and we're staying at sixty-three more often. And realistically, the police department has been adjusting their services already to account for the times that they're below those sworn levels of sixty-five. And then there would be through attrition, that would be that. But then in June, through attrition, going down one commander, right now, there's four. It'd go down to three commander positions through that attrition, and it would bring back one of those police officers. So again, we're trying to get more to the street level and reducing at the higher level. So you stay at that sixty-three sworn. And then we'd relocate an office associate that helps with some of the crime-free and community development to try to provide more resources in that department. And, but she also provides assistance in records. So adding back the, under the IMRF limit, two part-time records clerks to keep that division functioning where they need to be. And then there would be reduced security detail at council meetings. So most council meetings are generally pretty good, and we don't have some crazy outbreak, but we do have the police chief here every meeting. But if there is a meeting that we know there's going to be some high interest or there's some need, we can bring an officer in those cases. I see chief showing off back there. So that's all for the police department. Public works has actually taken a lot of reductions in the past few years. They took a lot in this current budget to help fill the gap that we had for the FY18 budget. So once again, there's a, one more reduction in that department, and it would be eliminate a street maintenance worker, but we're taking advantage that we have vacancies on the water maintenance side. So we would take one of the filled street maintenance workers and move them to the water sites. We're keeping the employee, but we're reducing on the street side. This becomes important because there's a different funding for each side of the house. So currently, the water side of the house is funded seventy percent water fund, thirty percent general fund, and the street side is seventy percent general fund, thirty percent water. By moving someone from the street side to the water side, you're shifting the fund that's the higher portion, right? So it'd be seventy percent water for that position. But then my next budget kind of balancing here is because we've reduced so much in that department, they're actually providing those maintenance workers more work between the two streets and water. They're getting a little more cross-trained, and they're not so specialized as they were when they had a lot more people to help them continue to be more specialized, to switch that funding from seventy-thirty to sixty-forty. So there'd be a shift more to the water side. And then we talked about these two last year, and I recalled it wasn't a unanimous decision by council, but there's the snow removal of the arterial sidewalks and snow removal for the central business district. So if you remove those, then it would be finding some other way for the sidewalks to be shoveled. So it's either you shift that duty to the businesses and homeowners that are on those areas, or there's been, you know, we use special service areas. You create a special service area and still provide it, but that's your new funding source for that mechanism. And that's public works. The other side is now we're at to community development department. We took a, when we shifted the administrative assistant from HR community development, she actually provides less hours to the city, so there's an additional reduction on the community development side for that. And then you have four options on crime-free and commercial property inspection program. This is really, the bulk of it is the community development department, but commercial inspections also uses the seven G rate for the firefighters. And so this program has a revenue, but the revenue is only on the residential crime-free side. And that revenue is not providing full funding for crime-free as a whole, what we spend in expenditures. And we have no revenue source to cover the commercial building inspections. So the real gap, you have the revenue and the expenditures, we're not getting about a hundred thousand dollars in revenues from, for these sources, you know, a revenue that's specific to these services we provide. So you have multiple four options to kind of consider and discuss them all over for this. One, you can eliminate it altogether. You get rid of the revenue, you get rid of the expenses. The second one, you reduce who provides crime-free, and you reorganize to solve that hundred thousand dollar gap. Now, the service to the people that are getting the crime-free inspections is not going to be the same level of service that they received when they were fully staffed, but this also assumes we're not going to change the revenue portion of it. So there is a service reduction on that side. The third option is you look at the commercial side. We charge a revenue on crime-free, but we don't on the commercial side. So do you put parity between those two and add a revenue source to the commercial side to provide funding for those inspections we're doing there? And then the fourth one is, this would be a large undertaking, so I don't know actually if this one would be feasible by January one, but it's to really kind of scrap all the individual things that we do because we're charging for crime-free and fire life safety, and go to more of that business licensing model where you charge it all up front instead of individual ones as they come along. So it'd be a re-haul of how we provide, or how we charge for all of our inspection services. But that one would take a little bit longer to enact if we want to go there. So that's really the picture of everything I've provided as the kind of recommended budget balancing package that will fill that one point six million dollar gap. I know recommended usually is more of a positive in nature tone, but it really does impact services that we're providing to the city. Any one of these options changes the services and how we provide it. So I did, and I'm not going to go through the alternatives, but I have provided a bunch of alternatives in other means that we can reduce expenditures or looking to your revenues of what you could shift. And again, we could deviate from policy and not meet our fund balance target at some level that council's comfortable with if you want to keep a service and use fund balance to provide that service. That I would probably recommend more on a one-time basis to buy you time to figure out something else, but I wouldn't do it on the recurring level because that's what all these budget balancing measures are. They are recurring in nature. So when we look at that five-year forecast, it changes the trend. Because if it was, just don't buy a dump truck, that helps us for one year and one year only. It doesn't help for all five years of that trend. So this is kind of the look of the new org chart. And in the end, that goes down ten FTA positions. So that's the change to organization. We are back to staffing levels of FY13. So I just picked four different years here. So you have FY13, fifteen, eighteen, which are current, and then nineteen if you implemented all those budget balancing measures we just discussed. And your staffing level goes back to this level of the FY13. So we are reducing, contracting where we are for staffing size. And then how that affects the forecast. So the red dashed line, that's where we started in June. If you make all the changes and you balance, right, you fill that gap, your policy again, your target is the blue and green. And then here, the new solid red line is we're staying within your fund balance targets a little above, but I was solving for year five, it gets us right back to where we need to be on policy. So you make these changes, it affects your forecast, and it's showing that we can bring our expenditures in line with the growth of our revenues. That's all I have. If you guys have any questions.
Alderman Fagan.
You know, I'm so glad we're going over it now instead of October, November like last year. Thank you very much. A couple of things, just my ideas, is police and fire is, you know, I don't understand that we're going to save any money eliminating police officers or firemen. You're going to talk about overtime. We can't take services away just because we've got, you know, crime doesn't, and fire doesn't reduce if our budget's reduced. I can't see the police and fire at all changes, maybe for the one administrative for the billing, that's fine. Public works, we're down to minimum on that. I don't see how we're going to be able to eliminate another employee. Crime-free housing, the community development, I would like to have us take a look a little longer on what we can do with that department and what we can make it a little more cost The expenditures, I'm not, I'm not even going to touch the municipal band. I'm not going to go through that. The other thing is, when we talk about agreement with the chamber of commerce, we want to get a little bang for our dollar on that, where they bring in more items, that bring in more festivals, more people into town. I don't think we're getting the full amount of the forty-five thousand. I think maybe we should even look at outsourcing, maybe bidding something out on that. And let's see, one last thing. Right now, you talk about revenue and what we can do to replace this. And I brought it up before another council, another council meeting. We have a lot of property, city property, that's just sitting vacant. We've got property across the street that we can get rid of. We can sell those buildings. We can get three, four hundred thousand dollars. We've got property around town that are put away for future fire stations that we'll never use. I've talked to the fire chief. We've got all these vacant properties that we've taken over that are sitting vacant that all we're doing is cutting the grass. And if I could get somebody to get this on the agenda soon rather than later, that we can take a look at this property, I mean, we could maybe offset a half a million dollars with this.
The only thing with property, sale of property, it's one-time in nature, so it'll help you buy time to make a different reduction later in the forecast.
That's true, but at least we've got something going back in the tax row.
Correct. So, but there'll be a gap between, because you know, property tax, you have your three year delay. There'll be a gap between when you get the money from when you sell the property to when you'll get, you know, a decent tax amount. So you probably will get the one-time money in the first year, right, FY19 of the forecast, but you probably won't see the value of that property changing to the for-profit business till that last year of the forecast. So you have about a four-year window you got to address.
But it's one step closer to that year. That's my point. Okay.
Alderman Fagan, I commend your aggressiveness in going through this and giving us your views on that. I don't agree with you on everything, but in terms of getting that property thing on an agenda, all you need to do is ask, and I think it only takes two council members.
We got two.
We got two. Right now, we'll put it on, put it on the agenda. So thanks, Pat. Alderman Noriko.
I have questions about some of the recommendations. Eliminating tuition reimbursement, what kind of recruiting impact is that likely? What kind of recruiting impact is that likely to have? And that may be a rhetorical question at this point, but, you know, it's something to consider. Also, eliminating the IT director position. I remember that one of our concerns about IT was that we had a broad enough perspective so that we could be confident that security issues were addressed and there was thought for what was needed in the future for the city's IT needs. If the director position is eliminated, who's going to do that kind of planning and thinking and researching and so forth?
So it'd be the assistant city manager. And so, the model of having HR and IT report to the assistant city manager is not unique. So there are job descriptions out there in other communities that do that. So I think we could find, you know, a good candidate for that. And, but it does reduce that kind of broad picture because now it's not one person focused on IT. They're portionally, only partially focused on IT. They're focused on CMO and then they're focused on HR. So it does lessen that ability to have that broader perspective. So that's really where that service reduction is. And as for our current projects, our biggest one is the ERP software and all the softwares that need to integrate with that. And finance has been heavily involved. The assistant finance director, Bob, has been very helpful in keeping that going. So that project would actually then shift into finance and we'd keep that moving.
Any other comments? Alderman Fanouken.
The numbers that you've put together in terms of cost reductions, those are all specific to the general fund though, correct?
Correct. So if they impact other funds, I haven't shown it on here.
Okay, but, and that was going to be my follow-up question. So then, the reduction in staff, no matter in what area, though, would have some impact on our pension payments down the road too, wouldn't it? As, as we have less employees, if we were, you know, one less police officer, that'd be a reduced payment there and firefighter and then IMRF also.
Right. So police and fire are the ones that would provide you more of a reduction than IMRF. IRF is already a very small portion. So it wouldn't, you wouldn't see the result through IMRF employee reduction in that pension side.
No, but I mean, that's all part of, that's all part of the overall picture that we're looking at.
Yes, I've included that in the figure. So those are like the fully loaded salary and benefit figures that affect the general fund in each of those scenarios.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Verbit.
Just to echo the thank you to you and the leadership throughout the city of DeKalb. This is really providing us the time to make thoughtful considerations, important considerations. We're providing services and it's people providing these services. So when we have to make these cost savings decisions, these are not easy decisions. But we can see with your work, the work of the FAC, that we can be responsible. We can be operating responsibly. It won't be easy. What about the notion of a commercial transfer tax? In other words, charging, I'd like to not impact the homeowner as much as possible. So what about the notion of, say, a commercial transfer tax for every commercial transaction, for every apartment transaction, that kind of thing?
If you're going to model it similar to like a real estate transfer tax, that actually, even though our home rule has to go to the voters on about, they change that through state. So if it's going to be that model, we wouldn't have the ability to do that as a council. You'd have to get it onto the ballot. And then I'd have to look through different scenarios. I don't know if it wouldn't be so much of like a transfer tax, but we'd have to find some kind of nexus, if maybe it's a fee or how that is. But it's worth looking into. We can look at that. And that was more kind of the idea in that fourth option for crime-free, because we have so many different things out there. If it's more upfront and one thing and here's all the stuff, when you do this, you know, own this building, here's all the things you need each year and that's what your total is once versus the small individual one. So you could look at it that way, or we can look at how do we do this one on its own.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Jacobson.
I am generally the most vocal around budget time. And obviously, we spread budget time out through the whole year. Again, I've screamed up here in some meetings about getting adequate data and getting an understanding of what our options are. I believe this is the first time we've seen that information, probably in my at least seven years, seven almost and a half years sitting in the seat. There are very difficult choices here. Again, we are to the point that we are going to have to either reduce services or raise taxes. And I appreciate the significant outpouring of advice from the community, especially out, whether it's through social media or phone calls that I've been getting or otherwise. But the reality becomes, those are our two options, reduce services or raise taxes. We've made several cuts over the years. We've cut a lot of the soft cuts. We've cut some of the paper transactions that we were doing to give us some cushion room. We're at a point in the budget, as we see with this document, raise taxes, cut services. That's all we have left at this point. So again, they're going to be very difficult discussions going forward. We've needed to have this conversation for years. We're finally here and I appreciate the level of detail that's being provided. I appreciate the significant options. Again, it's not a last-minute push, throwing things on an agenda that we could never cut or would be very difficult in a last-minute scenario that we could even have these discussions. So this is the beginning of it. It's going to be tough. There are going to be people affected. There's going to be people that have been long-term employees that are likely going to be affected by this. But to keep this thing going and to keep doing it the most responsible way for the dollars we're getting, this is the start of a lot of change and a lot of restructure and a lot of different way of providing services at the revenues we're bringing in. And I'm excited we're at that first step. So lots of work left to do.
Thank you, Alderman Jacobson. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Markort.
I guess the way, big picture, the way I see it, we need to decide on the property tax part, which way you're going to want to go forward, if you're going forward with a dollar amount or if you're going forward with the EAV amount. Because if we follow the policy as written, it does result in an increase in property tax. But it does also increase the dollar amount that's available for the services. So a combination may be something that needs to be considered. I don't want to pay any more in property taxes than I do myself. But that opens up more options where you also have reductions in expenditures that aren't as drastic and/or as cutting into our services that we provide. And it frees up that dollar amount. So I guess that would be my recommendation is that we need to come to some sort of a conclusion on that first going forward and have that, because that affects your five-year forecast, if we're going to do it this way or we're going to do it that way coming forward. You know, I understand the rate thing and wanting to keep the same rate, but it doesn't work in my mind going forward.
So what you're suggesting, Mike, is that we really have to make a decision on consideration number one, the property tax levy, et cetera, before we can really start attacking some of the other options that she's outlined, that Molly has outlined in the general fund budget planning process?
Right, because we can agree to a lot of these eliminations. But then if we come back with the property tax and we decide that we want to go with the dollar amount and levy for a full thing, well then, we've already agreed to get rid of all these services ahead of time. And then you end up with this great thing and we end up with another loss of employees that have some institutional knowledge of something here at the city. And you're eliminating people that are hands-on with the community providing these services because they're a face or a voice or whatever, so we're losing that part. So that would be my suggestion. You have to decide on that part somewhat in the back of your mind in order to be able to not cut your services on this part or this part and still say, okay, I'm going to have a balanced budget.
Does the logistical mechanism that we have set forward, and I like the idea that we have a matrix right down through the end of the year, December 31st, on what it is that we need to do. Can we do what Alderman Markort suggests? And then that would give us, I don't want to, I don't know if I want to use the word easier, but it would give us perhaps a more clearly focused thing of what it is that we need to cut and what are, what some of those other ways that we can increase revenue other than tax levy and taxes. You see what I mean? Is that, is that, is that within the mechanism that you've set forth, Molly, in terms of our roadmap?
So my intention is that the next budget workshop, you have the same three topics. Because until you make any decision, we're not going to actually move from these topics. So if you want to tackle property tax levy first, that's great because it does in some way solve a little portion if you go through the rate. But it'll solve a big portion if you go through the dollar amount. So, you know, like Alderman Fagan said, if you don't want to reduce the level of service that you have in police and fire, then maybe the property tax levy is the revenue you want to consider to do that. So you don't have to make those reductions. But you could also say, no, we want to stay with the rate and look to something else. So you still have that decision. But I do think Alderman Markort is correct in that you need to decide what you want to do with that tax levy first because that really is going to guide what you need to look to as your alternatives when we go through the expenditures and revenues in the budget balancing effort. Because it is a big difference. If you choose to stick with the dollar amount, you don't have to do a majority of these reductions because it provides a million dollars. Your gap's one point six. So it helps you keep services where they're at.
Alderman Fanouken.
I just, I just think I want to summarize this out loud. So I understand it and hopefully Mike correct me if I'm going down the wrong path, please. So I think what Alderman Markort is suggesting is by resolving the tax levy, property tax levy idea first, is we know then the dollar amount that that will bring in. And if we go with a little bit higher dollar amount or a little bit higher levy where more dollars come in, then we don't have to take as many general fund dollars to make up the difference in pensions. And that allows us then to use those general fund dollars towards operations.
Correct.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I don't agree with some of these reductions. I think some of these reductions are, would be good in the long term, given the fact that other revenues are decreasing. And so it does need to be a combination of that. I'm not saying raise the property tax all the way up and not do any of these. I'm just saying that until you know, if you're going to stick with the policy or change the policy, if you're going to stick with that policy going forward, as painful as that may be, it gives you that base guideline so you know what you're working with.
Alderman Jacobson.
Again, the reality of that is significantly higher than inflation property taxes every year on the residents. You cannot keep up with the pension costs right now. That's the issue we're having here. And that's the issue all government bodies are having. And again, there's a way to affect that base rate too, is to reset the staff headcount. And that's even significant, more significant staff cuts. The reality is, the only options we have are significant cuts or significant tax raises. And even if they're very large tax raises and very large tax cuts, again, until you fix that fundamental problem that we're still not really addressing, we're balancing a budget again this year because we must, because the hole keeps growing bigger and bigger. Again, the reality is this community can't afford any more in taxes. It's done. We're zero, we're at a hundred percent. There is no more. There's no more option to raise the taxes on this community. And we know that. So then, it's unfortunate that we are going to have to lose staff. But we get what we can afford, not what necessarily we want in this case. And again, that's, it's going to be very difficult. It's going to be very painful. It's going, again, to personally affect people we know here. That is what we are required to do at this point. The taxpayers are done paying more. There is no opportunity, there is no option, as far as I'm concerned, to continue to raise those taxes beyond the appropriate level of internal growth in our city until we address what is causing above internal growth in terms of expenditures, mainly union contracts, mainly the cost of benefits in those contracts, mainly the expectation of a guaranteed raise every year. When you put those together, they are far exceeding the growth of the property values, of inflation, of internal growth, of city growth, of all of those metrics. And again, that status quo, that idea that, oh, we get a three percent or two and a half percent every year. Again, when you understand the total cost at five or six or seven percent of many of those things, when you account for step increases, when you account for health insurance rates, when you account for now pension payments, when you account for those things, the reality of a seven percent growth rate for employees, total compensation growth rate is ludicrous. It's impossible. And until we address that, we're locked into these contracts that our former council found it within their purview to approve long-term contracts without understanding the revenues. We have a couple of years that we are tied to those contracts at this point. But again, unless the employees step up and say, we are the public servants of this community and we understand that we can't continue to grow at five and seven and eight percent rates because the homeowners aren't growing at that rate, the values aren't growing at that rate, we will have this problem every year. And we're seeing that in our five-year projections. Again, we are balancing a one and a half million dollar shortfall this year. Our revenues are not keeping up with our expenditures, not because we're not changing the revenues. It's because those expenditures are growing so significantly more than inflation that there is no possibility we can keep up. Again, it goes back to headcount or average salary. Those are our ability here to change that equation. And until the employees step up, again, we're going to do the cost cuts this year to now reduce the management to probably the lowest level it's been in my term up here. We're going to talk about these different cost-cutting measures, which I think we're going to enact a lot of. going to enact a lot of, understanding and being cognizant so that next year we won't have those options. And we're still going to have that million-dollar gap growing every year. Until you change the structure, until you change the root cause of the issue, which is effectively salaries, every council and every year and every budget term is going to be having the same discussion. At some point, you will lose all of the rest of the niceties. Things like, well, we don't want to touch the municipal band. At some point, in the very near future, one or two budget years, the question's going to be, do you want a police officer on the streets dealing with the crime or do you want a band that plays nine shows a year? Again, those are the realities we face at this point. Well, we've been able to leave some of those things off the chopping block as the same problem continues to increase. And as we continue to cut each year, the options we have and the options the council will have will continue to get less and less and less until you're at a point of significant service cuts. Where we're talking laying off four or five police officers, where we're talking off, talking, laying off four or five firefighters because that'll be all we have left to balance this budget. Until you affect that, until you change that equation, we're running in circles effectively, but at least it's a start.
Mike, did you want to respond?
I just, I wasn't saying I was disagreeing with your premise. I was just saying that going forward, we need to pick one or the other as our policies so that we know what we're doing. And a lot of it is predicated on that property tax part. So that if we want to make a financial policy change on that part and follow one way or the other, it needs to be a long-term view of that so that we can make the effect on the headcount that needs to match up with it. And so while I may not be as drastic, I do also agree that there needs to be some sort of a balancing act there. And we all do that in our personal lives as well too. You know, in order to make our own personal budgets match up, there's a certain amount that you have to do. And occasionally it is painful on those things, given what your circumstances are. I agree that in the three and a half years that I've been here, that we haven't necessarily discussed it to that certain extent. But all I'm saying is that you have to decide what your policy is, if you're going to follow this or follow that, so that you can make your decisions going forward.
Alderman Norrico.
I want to disagree with something Alderman Jacobson said, or I believe that he has suggested when he said, our only options. I think that in terms of the other options listed, the taxes, there are some that I think are reasonable to discuss. Others, you know, I don't think are as favorable, but I think we should have a discussion about the taxes. In other words, the revenue side. I don't think our only options are, you know, cutting services and cutting staff. I think that's part of the equation, but I, I do think we need to take a look at those other options.
Alderman Verbic.
And Alderman Jacobson, I certainly hear what you're saying about workforce being smarter, learning along the way, but we also need to be smarter and learn along the way. It wasn't too long ago when I saw a previous council approve a 3% increase for the city manager. So then what does everyone else expect in the organization if they are also performing their duties at a satisfactory level? You know what? They're going to also expect 3%. And you've made that point that we can't afford it. So we, it's also on us to make smarter decisions.
Okay, troops, smart decisions, we have to make them. Yeah, precisely. Okay. Now, I know Molly will move into the five-year financial plan, but you, did you read, what I think I heard you saying in the context of the first two considerations that at this point will transcend into that discussion based on our decisions on items one and two? Is that, is that a correct assessment?
Yeah. So if you guys don't have any questions or want to go through that, we don't need to go through the five-year plan. It was on there in case something was in there that you wanted to talk about as an alternative to what was on that budget balancing measure or, you know, the assumptions that were used to create the forecast.
Right, right. Any, any further discussion on the five-year financial plan at this point? I would, I would encourage folks to, to pull that off of the, of the website. It's on our website. It's a part of background information on this committee of the whole meeting. It's, it's very thought-provoking as it relates to what we want to do with this city going Okay, any other business? Alderman Jacobson.
I did want to make one more quick comment.
Sure.
In terms of, again, the information that's getting out to the public. And it frustrates me being so active in some of our online groups when there is a clear attempt to mislead our residents and to use tactics that I consider unfair and untruthful in order to engage people. Again, the level of detail we're getting in some of this backup now is outstanding. And yes, it's dry and yes, it can be confusing at some level if you are not intimately aware of how the budget works and those things. But again, to see the level of presented options, to see the amount of time and effort that is going into giving us the tools to make good decisions, that's publicly available. It's on our website. It's out there. The agendas are out there. The backup from tonight's meeting is out there. Before you rush to judgment, before you assume that all of us sitting up here are ready to, to jack up your property taxes and every other tax in the city because that's what someone told you, read the backup. Get comfortable with it. Have informed discussions. Engage your council members in those discussions. It is a very, very difficult conversation and to have the depth of knowledge and the body of knowledge of those people, again, that are going to be forced ultimately to pay these bills through their, their taxes, wherever those taxes may come from, conversation is good. Data is good. Legitimate discussion of items is good to give people relevance. If the goal is literally to rile people up and find the people in the community that are just angry to be angry, don't be one of those people. It's basically where I'm at.
Any other comments? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this special committee of the whole.
So moved?
It's been moved by Alderman Jacobson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion on adjourning? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.